You are all set.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, welcome to the Thursday, August 25th, 2022 Select Planning Board. We're all present, we're waiting for Ms. Lewis and Mr. McQuaid, you will not be joining us tonight. I'll start the meeting with our DEI statements. The Situative Planning Board is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact by providing our equal and various disagreements. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, if we may personalize and monetize communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our community members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support the respect of the community. And everybody knows what I gave it through so, so do I motion to accept the statement?
Go on. Second. Say second.
Oh, second.
On favor of those that have said.
Aye. Aye.
So our first order of business tonight is a discussion of the senior center parking. As Ms. Hayes and Ms. Kelly now, would you like to propose one?
Hi, I'm Gray.
Would you be kind enough to speak into my microphone? And we'll state to you maybe about a little bit.
Would you like to state my name?
Please.
Linda Ace Kelly, 44, Hollywood, situated, director of the senior center.
Thank you. So we're here to discuss um senior center parking. And we did have an offline meeting for the public to know. Food pantry was there, recreation was there, senior center was there. Karen, Ian and I were all present and I was not present.
I was not present.
I was not present.
Mr. Mandro was present. Never mind, Mr. Mandro was there. Um and we did talk about the parking situation. Um I just like you get from my own point of view, I don't know that we've got a lot of conflict together. Um I did, I did walk away from the meeting with the statement that the food pantry is going to explore some options for their hours. Recreation was going to have their parking on the side of the building, whatever you call that. Um and when we asked the senior center to give us any, I don't remember yet any of this operated. And we asked you to consider your hours. I did give the decision again that we posted in, it was like a thousand years ago in 2019. And one of the decisions, number 16, is in order to minimize conflicts with the recreation center and using the playground to detract, the programming of events at the senior center should be coordinated with the recreation department and be used as scheduled. Coordination and the programming of events at the senior center was served to manage the traffic and parking delays of the new selfutilized parking supply and minimize conflicts. I think one of the things that caught me by surprise was, we can't be forced to reach a site and evaluation. We knew there was kitchen. I was under no illusion that there was going to be a lunch every day, which I did plus the huge bubble of activity there. Um I do know that there was a request by Mr. Mandro for all staff to park across the street and central park. Uh I'm not up there about to know, couple times I went by, I know you were late. So there was, I do not see any cars parking there and I don't go by there often when we go by, I don't go by there.
No, I see.
So um.
It's been a little slower, there was not a tremendous need and we would park there and I have been when we knew it was necessary. If it has been a little unpredictable, for instance Monday, um I didn't foresee that need and really there wasn't a need, so we should have.
So I, I guess, the doctor of board, uh what the senior center was coming forward with is to request for additional parking. We need to make an evaluation and assessment about whether that's allowed. For me, I have a problem because this is not just a single building, this is a campus environment, which is not object of worship here. But I haven't seen anything, so we have a food pantry, we have a senior center, we have a recreation. And it's not anybody's individual building, it's the town's building. So everybody needs to cooperate and everybody put in the same sandbox. And I, like I said, I spiced and diced the numbers. Um I, for me personally, I still, I see a further plan for the gates complex. I, I don't see a need.
We are doing our best to mitigate what we have seen. Now, the summer has been a little slower. We certainly are mindful, when we first started our scheduling and opened the building, the food pantry wasn't there. Now they are, we have seen some of the effects of that. It is only two days a week and really primarily one morning, which is Tuesday. Funny enough, well, we did have an activity that was rather large or could be moved to Thursday because of the men's breakfast and the conflict with two things going on and then the addition of the food pantry made that even worse. So that was, Tuesday does happen to be our lightest day at this time, which is when the food pantry is busiest in the morning. It has caused us problems on occasion when we've had a popular speaker for the men's breakfast. But again, I do think that those are the only conflicts we've seen or, you know, additions to the demand for parking. The recreation department has not been a conflict. It's only meant that we have to be mindful of whether or not we can use that other third lot for backup when we needed it or not. And that's where the coordination has come in. It's not been a problem with our lot.
Um I, I watched one that situate weekly that you had your interview. And that, that lot, when you showed picture, that one was supposed to have fire access to when people parked it. That does look like this is a route for two lanes of traffic.
Well, that would be questionable on a good day, but it is. And then the food pantry uses it as well for their drive-through, so so that our patrons can still utilize it as an access or ingress, mostly ingress, I guess. They have to put up cones and make sure people can still drive by. So that's been one issue. The parking, which granted could be for only a one hour or two hour stint and sometimes really that overlap is even less, but they do use it. We don't know what happened Monday, that just so happened to be a recent problem in that instead of parking parallel to the fence, which would have kept them off the road, someone chose to do it in a angled fashion and everybody else followed suit and it was definitely a hazard. Which is why I took the picture, it just so happens.
Yeah, I should say.
Um, I had it.
Yeah.
So um that would not normally happen, it's just we just don't always, can't always police it or haven't had the need really to police it.
I think of a giant help, so that might be a problem, so I think that they want to have certain parks.
I mean, we do offer, as I mentioned right now, we do offer a little valet help and I should have had that Monday and I didn't. Um some people take them up on it, some don't. Our BMS, really three of them often are out at the same time, so that's not been an issue. The staff parking normally is behind the building at the very least. And again, we know we can move it and go to central for now, but, you know, the winter months, I, I don't know. It's not ideal.
It's not ideal, but I, I used to take public transportation to work and when I worked in co-asset, I had to park in the church parking lot and walk to my office. I mean, I didn't always have parking right outside of my lot.
I have done that to us. Well, you're right, but I, I'm here as long as I can't take a left out of my lot and have to drive, you know, five minutes out of my way to just take a left to come here for a meeting. So it's not ideal, but we are absolutely willing and happen doing it.
Karen?
Um yeah, so one of the other things that that meeting, I haven't, I, I forgot to email uh Mr. Hunt, who was representing the food pantry that day and ask him if they had come up with any changes. I neglected to, but he did agree, admitted this meeting, yes, the food pantry is not supposed to be parking, they are supposed to be parking at the church across the street. And he reiterated that they were going to try to enforce that.
In their defense, I don't want to interrupt. Many of them either may even be coming to lunch first before they go over and volunteer or have some connection and do feel, you know, they do feel content sort of part there. And we haven't argued that. And if they do stick to the back, backup spaces and the staff is able to move, then leaving the lot for, you know, that's been another help mitigating that, so.
Right, I mean, it's just that fire access has to be maintained so that everybody's health, safety, welfare is protected. Um the other thing that um all the parking is, it's not, it's not, it's everybody's party, it's not specific. So the planning board is going to have to decide if you think at this time that the traffic study numbers, which they did do as their condition, warrants additional parking or you don't, or you don't think that it warrants additional parking at this time. That, that's the, that's your basic decision that, um, that you, that you need to make.
Could I make an interjection? I think it's a little more, it's broader than that. Because I believe the original conversation with permitting the senior center was a conversation about what is the plan for that quote-unquote campus. I don't believe we've seen a plan. I don't believe that we should change any parking at this point until we see the plan. Because we have no idea what the future is going to look like there.
That's correct.
And, you know, when we approved it, we said, you're living within the means of happiness. And to, and we still wanted to see the traffic study. But I guess my feeling is, we made that very clear when we approved senior center. And it was a close vote.
Yes, it was. You are correct.
And you know, my feeling is, somebody needs to look at the big picture and then figure out how this fits into that big picture. And we haven't seen it.
I don't have it.
I'm sorry?
I don't have it either.
I, I understand that, I understand it's frustrating, but it's also frustrating for us to say we're the planning board and we're supposed to be looking at planning and it doesn't appear to be. There appears to be a series of initiatives to just take over pieces and spaces and hope it all works out. And at this point, uh maybe it's not starting to work out or may, maybe the programs are, are being more well attended than we expected. All the more necessary to look at the overall use of the site.
Naturally, in, in our decision, it says the board summarized that the location of the building in the lot was a compromise and wants within the context of the construction of senior center, any absence of a comprehensive player.
Right.
And that's, that's my sticking point, I have a hard time. Uh Rebecca? Ian?
I think you and Steve have said it all. Ben?
Yes, my question, I'm interested not just in the study which you reviewed, but just an ad freshly aired. Do, do you feel that there's fundamentally not adequate parking for the senior center? Is that your general impression?
Um, I might not go that far because there are days that it is adequate. It does impact or repeat a little bit of our growth and planning for use of the building to the extent that we could, because we are restricted. And there are days that we really will have to look at how we handle events and programs.
And then you've already mentioned that to date, there's been no conflict with recreation.
There really is not no conflict.
And what, it sounds like there is some conflict with food pantry.
Sure, it's, it was an unintended or unpredicted use in addition, so that is having to be managed.
Right, right. Sure.
Both on the air end and, and hours.
Because I'm, I'm partial to kind of what Steve said, given kind of like the conceptual idea, you know, of, of campus. And really like in this day and age, we don't, as a planning board, we really don't want to create more impervious surface and parking area just for the sake of parking. Because I drive by there, yeah, I love the first brush road. And let's be honest, like 18 hours a day or 12 hours a day, the lot is empty. There's sometimes zero cars there at all. So they could potentially use land that could have a higher and better use just for parking. It's kind of large and empty. I kind of take caution at that. One thing I wonder now that kind of COVID is waning a little, that I know you're working on a census population of older folks, have you, has there been any sort of organized attempt to do some sort of um carpooling or like looking at, like truly promoting alternative means of transportation during most peak times?
It's not been that. I will say that the van that we use for local riders has been busier picking up people coming to the senior center. So that even, even a year ago when we were first opening, people were coming in, they weren't coming. So now they, they are, and by that I mean people who need the transportation, who needs, you know. We do have people who come with others, we do have that, but there's not been a concerted effort to increase that. Perhaps there should be. As I said earlier, the mitigating that we've done is to try to have some help in taking people's cars when they do have to park for a way. And we did put up the signs, um, they're not everybody's favorite, but trying to encourage people who have more mobility to park for a way and need more of the spaces close to the building for a while.
Right.
So, and you know, that, that's something. Otherwise, people are, you know, they've, they've gotten a little bit used to coming in and getting a little more exercise or driving around or waiting, um, so there's been.
I guess that, that's, uh, like, that's nothing I can try to think of as a soft solution. I'm a bit flatter that the van or the shuttle is getting more used and sort of promoting alternative employment. Yeah, I think almost like yeah, there's, even if there's a board or a way we could promote carpooling and coordinating that or even if there's like, if people have caregivers or family members promoting drop-offs or grand buddies type system or something, you can ride with a younger person. So then, whatever, I mean, I don't, I don't acknowledge that well. Might be helpful in the absence of being able to exploit that actual parking space on the ground right now.
We are all aware of aging parents, that's the worst thing you can do is take advantage of the losses. I dealt with that myself, so. But I think it's best if you, you have to be some kind of conservative effort, especially in the climate that we live in. And we try, if we can transport, if bike riding, do all this other kind of stuff, that we probably should be able to make a much conservative effort that um and also it may increase the socialability, it's valuable to make references online. Um that's not, I need to say that, but that is a good soft solution right now. Perhaps it's a way to add to that. I don't think we have a newsletter and people will get out, I don't know, some people will be, so I'm sure it's going to be something that's out there. Anything else you may think?
One, one hard solution that I was thinking of recently, I take my daughter's almost her wrap program. There's very support, this is an aside, I don't know if that applicable to your situation right now, but the, the area kind of between the track and the tennis courts and the gate school, there's, there's really no formal striding over there, yet it's used for parking. I think there, the town has to, should look at, if there are formal spots, like we're counting those spots, then they should strive towards, I mean,
We're counting those spots.
Then they're reaching out and running.
We are counting, we are counting a lot of those areas as spots, absolutely.
Yeah, because it, it really could be improved over there. There's also, there's also a certain relationship in where the recreation drop-off is where it's technically says one way, but people go both ways, ready to get it locked.
There is potentially one place where it might have been conflicting during these, these summer months because of the drop-off.
Oh, really?
With people trying to come into the senior center from that way or exiting as well.
Yeah.
Probably, I remember that.
But I haven't, I haven't noticed that over there, it's kind of just parked on dirt. And it's sometimes you park parallel, like oriented one way, some people are at an angle. It's probably could squeeze some space into the existing spots.
Wasn't that part of our conversation originally about the senior centers right from that day?
It, I mean, I think it was talked about, but it wasn't part of the senior center project.
No, it wasn't too much.
It was, overall that would help, um, would help the area.
Yeah.
But I, it was not, it was definitely not part of the senior center.
Not the final one.
Right, right, that's fine, yeah.
So just a little. Lunches had a big impact.
It has.
And sometimes there were a lot of people there and sometimes there was lunch. And I think as Karen had pointed out, we were, we knew that there was a kitchen, there was a kitchen at the other senior center. We did not know until a county, like a town meeting, that Monday was supposed to come to hire a chef. That was the first we heard of it. So for four, four days a week at noon time, dinner was served. And I'm wondering if you have something that's really for a lot of people at 11 o'clock and it doesn't get out until 12 o'clock, some of them are staying, a lot of them are leaving, is there any way to flex your scheduling?
Not always. So for instance, yes, we do have a popular exercise class at 11:00, then just there is no wiggle room there at all. So it just has to be then. That didn't seem to be as big a problem as, there was a presentation on Wednesdays and it is at 11:00 and we are looking to see whether or not there is any other time that they're in place. People do like the idea that they get to go to that and then go to lunch. Uh Wednesdays are a big day, Mondays are a big day. So we will try to shift a little bit, but we can't. Sometimes it is just the overlap of 15 minutes and that is the problem is that maybe we could, maybe we could move lunch 15 minutes now.
Maybe lunch at 12:30.
Well, they're used to it now, but you're right.
Lunch is at 11:00.
Like, yeah. And some know the routine now when they come early and they sit and they spend more time there. But that is the bubble, that is the bubble, uh 11:00 to. Sometimes one, depending on what else is going on, we have people coming in for 1 o'clock and if lunch hasn't led out, we should do this. Sometimes a crunch. Monday, Wednesday and Thursday are generally lunches that 40 to 50 people, right? Tuesdays are like the dates I mentioned, because we keep it to sandwiches. I mean, that really was always the plan, I'm sorry that didn't get conveyed, but of course, we didn't really have it in the budget. It either approved for what we were planning.
Well, you know, that in itself is unfortunate. It really is, because I'm a big proponent of communication. You have an inkling of an idea that this was going to work. If that were the case, then your program could have revolved around lunch. If that's what you were going to do.
I, I do seem to recall, I'm forgiving, I'm not sure if this is accurate, but the architect really tried to draw up numbers and that was, that was actually based on having lunch. So those numbers that he had brought forth had lunch in mind. And I, I would have to go back and look at it, but we were anticipating the kinds of numbers that we are talking. We might have anticipated 30 people, not 50 people on this thing.
Well, I feel that at this point in time, no additional parking.
And I think that that's what we need to capture a resolution here. So I, I'm, I'm hoping to say that you, you agree with this is that at this point with a comprehensive player for the gates campus, um, I would not be anticipating putting any more additional parking to what is called the senior center lots, but in reality, this tower parking is there a second?
Second. In all in favor or do you want to make another?
Oh, good, yeah. That's it, my piece.
Sorry, I think you're wrong.
And just for discussion, I think, no make caveat, I think if we obviously end up with some serious welfare and safety issues, then we're having to reevaluate.
But definitely.
You know, that's a different problem, you know.
Yeah.
And to add one more thing to that, I think a memo should be sent to DPDW and prevail upon it to strike that area.
We will take that, I think it's a reservation.
Thank you.
So with that being said, uh right now, the parking will remain the same until we have further development. Is there any proposal?
Okay, I should, you need to ask for vote.
I, oh, we don't know. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
By the way, we have a public hearing at 7 o'clock.
There's six minutes.
So if you want to just, what do you?
One. Um, I'm able to approve reading minutes for August 11th, 2022.
Second. Anna?
Hi. I'm able to approve the requisition of $150.80 to Gate House Media for legal ad for 14 to 16 Old Country Way for $66.30 to Gate House Media for legal ad for 20 Manhattan Road for $68.90 to Gate House Media for legal ad for 109 Ellen Street, lots 1 and 2, AKA 111 and 115. Ellen Street and $158.60 to Gate House Media for legal ad, 803 First Parish Road and Donaldwood Lot 3.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we still have five minutes. What would you like to make?
Are you going to do the liaison report?
Yeah, so I, um, I'm the liaison for the zoning and they met Tuesday with the immediate continuing since October 4th. They felt that the peer review engineering and jewelry more work wise. Uh they could build this in anybody's interest, I hope we need, they had way too many on the agenda.
To clarify this before you meet.
Yes, yes, before you meet, yes, yeah, before you meet, so. And that was here, we, um, yeah, we know their agenda, yeah, nice. So that will be continued on the lot on October 4th, um, see when they get this stuff done. I mean, that's all right.
I went to the selectmen's meeting on Tuesday night and one of the items, aside from a presentation on water that no one really had any comment on, the fact that they want to put six, a six bay garage on this property really brought water to me. But that said, um.
Six bay garage, or what?
Uh they want six water troughs, instead of putting one gallon of rainwater.
Hmm.
Anyway, um.
They have six water troughs.
I don't know what they have.
Did DPDW do trucks?
DPDW does trucks. Um, the $400,000 that came from 12 Brothers was hard navigation. It was a total of $600,000. One of the select board members thought that maybe it should go for, uh, bath, bathrooms at Egypt Beach. But as was pointed out, who's going to maintain it? Who's going to keep track of it? Ultimately, who will be responsible for this? Who knows? So I felt and I stated that, you know, this money should go to field. We have on the warrant, $93,000 for 90-foot JV field at Central Car. And that $400,000 should go toward that. And the souvenir army felt that CPC certainly had the money and it really didn't need any more to augment this or to take away. But as someone else pointed out, it was always not on board. It was always nice that if there were funds available, to use them and not take it all out of CUSA. And this would be available for something else every day. So of course, no decision was made at that moment in time. So there you go. That was more than they could have brought, again.
What else?
As I tried, we did, we're all set, right?
We're all set.
We're all set. And is that going to tell me? Do we all attend?
There's a lot of stuff in it and I can't go through all that stuff.
Well, in your opinion, what's the most important item?
I think it's just, um, rewording a lot of stuff that's older.
Yeah.
Um, that changing genders. Yeah, a lot of that. And then it's just, um, bringing it up to date. So it's more centered to other town's charters, because it had some things in it that weren't, um, that were, um, just not necessary anymore. They didn't really change too much of everybody's powers, that all kind of, that stay the same, right?
It didn't let any function do that, that, that.
No.
All of the stuff, so is it seven o'clock?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so at 7:00 we're going to come back to our agenda, which is a continued public hearing, cycle administrative review and special program for a multi-family building in Village Center, Enablement District, Greenwood Gateway District, Greenwood Gateway District. Also about the 700, a source here to present that to our guests. Hello, state your name. I have to show your affiliation.
I just wanna state for the record that things were received after the deadline. And we are not talking about those in any great detail. The new site plans have not been submitted to the board. Because they were submitted after the, after the timeline. There are some other materials that were submitted and the board has not seen.
So I see that Mr. Sullivan is out with us tomorrow.
He's on trial.
He's on trial.
He's on trial. Well, he's been on trial for two weeks.
He's on trial, okay.
He's been on trial.
Um. We had stated at last meeting that we need to be ready for this meeting and last year or not. Uh I told Mr. Sullivan, yeah, I'm gonna tell everybody again. We had extremely process driven and we have a lot of work and we have deadlines and he wanted for us. To evaluate the work. It used to be an entirely fashion. So although you handed all of this to us tonight, we really are not gonna talk about that.
Completely yes.
And we've been doing this for a long time. Uh this is, this is the seventh consecutive meeting, the continuance that we've had. I I'm gonna tell you as plain as I can, it's time to fish or time to bait. I mean, we really need to move along. Okay? So why don't you tell us and then we'll, what you get, as much as you can. Can you speak directly to that?
Eric Schumaker from McKinsey Engineering Group. Um I'll catch the board members up with. Uh the revisions we've made to the site plan since we last met. Um so those consisted with a permeable, permeable paper pathway to the patio. Uh so that was added to the plan at the request of Mr. Chestier as well as a couple of board members from the last meeting. Uh we made uh added some further detail to the landscaping plan to reflect those changes. Uh made some slight revisions to the drainage design, uh slight modifications to the roof drain outlets as well as our. Construction details at the request of the peer review engineer. Uh the only thing other than that that was add to the site plan um or is affected by the site plan was that cotton pillow analysis. That was requested during the last meeting. So um that was submitted to the board as well. Uh so we we think we're in a good position with regard to stormwater and the site plan as a whole. So um I can answer any questions you may have relating to.
Um well, our um our peer review engineer, John Chestier, is here. And so he, I'd like him to talk about stormwater um and some other issues. Because there are some issues that the board is going to have to discuss and make and make a decision on. Um so that you can, so that they can move forward on a few things.
To chest.
Do I need to make a question?
Um so I gave a summary. Hopefully you all had that. So um. You know, I see all my letters tend to be lengthy because I try to be dense if it's for any purposes, but you have the letters more of a record of what's going on. So first section, I talked about some recommended conditions and then I go with some alterations for you to review. So. We know it's in the salt marsh and tide and conservation district. They can use a special permit. It's in the flood plain watershed protection district. They need a special permit for that. Under uh stormwater, uh I've listed some recommended conditions based on my review and what I think would, it will be beneficial for the project. Board should consider, but it's obviously up to you decide whether you agree. Um so we know that the site sits on the bank of First Heaven Brook. It is fairly steep bank. Uh some of it's got stone. Some of it's got trees and things growing up and it and. Did, you know, put the water from the roof and the rain garden, you know, right at the edge of the bank. And my recommendation is that they construct. Uh somewhat of a level spreader rather than just a standard outlet. They should have. A sill sort of set parallel to the bank to spread it out as much as they could. To minimize any potential for erosion versus just sort of the scandient stone. That'll, you know, dissipate the energy, right? If it pipe, then it's gonna concentrate again and then it must spread it out uh a wider area, in my opinion. Um I recommend that there's soil testing at the patio where the purpose gators have proposed. Um ultimately, and it's usually looked pretty mature at this stage. They may not have final architectural plan. But you need to make sure that whatever gathers down close to the roof is gonna be great. Calculations for that, that can be a condition for I to build a permit. Uh there's a couple of conditions that. They don't know who's um gonna be the, it sounds like they don't know who'd be the responsible contractor and party to inspect the uh. Rose and sediment controls. Uh you may want some input on that to make sure it's a qualified person. And. I had a recommended condition, the operation native plan, that if this, if the rain garden does get flooded during a coastal storm. Which is in the flood plains, we could, then immediately replace it. If we put all that salt water in there, I'm not sure what it's gonna do to everything. Cause those are salt water plants typically in a rain garden, you have freshwater plants. Um so the next section talks about issues that I think you need this board to make some determinations on. Um so the first one is under the Water Resource Protection District. So the site. It's in the zone A, it's in the zone two, it's a whole bunch of things. I mean, we know where it is in relation to the water supply. So. Uh although the bucket pond is on the other side, a bit downstream a bit, but they're in the zone A because the zone A is an offset from the bank of the surface water supply. Regardless of whether you're downstream or upstream. And also in the zone two with wells. So there is a requirement for recharge. Now. The board needs to determine whether you want them to recharge or not. There's not a lot of place you could. As a redevelopment project, I think you could allow it in the zone. A the water supply. The only place that we found tension in the work. That site had a septic system, you know, some time ago where sewer was installed. And that area actually had pretty good sand from all the time. But that's it. The the board needs to sort of discuss that amongst yourselves. You could go each way. It's redevelopment. You don't have to require it. If you think it's important for the water resource area or in other town. Agencies, if you think that's the case, then you could, you could ask them to look into doing something that regard um.
It's not in the plan now.
There's nothing on the plan now. The original plan had recharge. We tested the soils and we found that much of the um. I don't know if it's in the north, well. The right side of the plan uh is filled with salt marsh. I think as you go towards the rotary, it starts to cover up a lot of the salt marsh, but um. What we found was the area that had been made it into septic system. So we really couldn't find. The ni- any sort of topsoil or major soil because they would have excavated that out to the sand with septic system. So you couldn't find it and then water came in there. So it didn't even matter to do much of anything at that point in time. So. Uh I mean, I think that's, that's, you know, the regs are. In the Water Resource Protection District, it's supposed to recharge. It's, it's that less impervious area than they had before. So they're actually, you know, promoting it to some extent, but there's no active. Uh you know, physical recharge device. And so that's something I think you need to flip right on. Um I already talked about a recommended condition on outlets. That was also in that section. Under um. Seven fifty point eight development site standards, uh the um. There is an handicap spot in front of setback. I mean, it's probably best nice for handicap spots. It's probably nice to go away, but it's. In the front step backs. We need special permit. You need to look right on that. Um. I count like trees, sort of street trees and things like that that I can move. But I try not to have too much other comments on screening or. Buffering or plantings or whatnot. I mean, the ones that are like specifically spelled out regulations that I can. Say how many street trees are, I can count them up, but are the right size. I'll comment on that, but board should review that aspect. Um. The thing that I had limited information on the parking under the garage, I know that I saw it's been, we have Dirks here from uh. An Aston Associates and I can defer to his comments, but um the parking lot itself lies for parking, but inside the garage. Looks tight in the areas based on scaling the plan, but um I will defer to your traffic consultant on that. Under seven fifty-one low impact design standards. One of the things to make determination on, I mean, this is a totally new building. They're not using any prior people building. But it's, you know, is it, so is it a new development under the zoning laws or is it a redevelopment? That's something to. Review under that section because if isn't clear, uh that would be out of address. That's something that you could decide. Um do you want the plans to show which trees are to be removed and which trees are to be. Uh to remain in the area that is currently wooded on uh on this one. In this. So they don't show any specific trees. Uh they're just leaving it there. But I think they do show which some of the trees to be removed. Some of the trees move over. That's just a question. I think in the regs it says you can ask for trees over certain size. So I listed as comment and. You can decide what they want or not. And there's also relief requested under seven fifty-one point three E. The impervious area in the, in the front yard is exceeded by the car. That might just be because of the. The layout of the, the parking and and the access and lockways and whatever. Um definitely they wanted relief from that. So that's something you have to make a decision on. I recommend that you um, you know, you review the amenities base. All of these projects have, you know, several units and you know, people gonna. Go outside to use for recreation space or whatever. That's something the board should look into. Under, this is five eighty point seven. So at the last meeting. Street trees were proposed in the, I believe it's the state highway layout at Rotary and it was um discussed that they had to be off the rotary. And on the private site. So when I counted them. And I included, there is one sizable existing tree shown that looks like it's in that same sort of area. So. Thirteen new, one existing that probably would meet in S. This one. Six, I think it's a fifteen inch or sixteen inch. So that certainly would be, I mean, you'd rather have a large existing tree than having. Put, put in a three inch tree or two and a half inch tree. But it looks like it's one short. Now, there might be bigger trees in that wooded area, but none of them specified that they were. They just showed to say this is a street tree. And then you can make a determination that it complies or doesn't comply, but based on the length of frontage, however many, there's only a few back. So that's something I can actually count.
So can I just, just a quick question on that? Did we talk in the past about not renaming plant in um state? They moved it back out. But when they moved it back out, they eliminated.
Who, who's state moved it back out?
They didn't, yeah.
Based on what you're asking me.
Where is that on the?
The line is here. This is the right away line. So on the last plan.
Oh, okay. So we're inside the right way on that.
Yeah, so the last plan, they had the trees like here.
Right.
And now they've moved them back here, but. Okay, but the, but you know, they, this, this, it's just shown as a wood line. I don't know if any of those trees meet a street tree. It did, you know, it could very well be a tree that's fifteen, twenty inches in there that's close enough that would be a street tree. But they should have shown it, take credit part so that you could make it, you know, easy then. And then I would have said that it would have been okay something for that. They don't show it. Um. And I think I've pretty much gone over the uh. The, the stormwater, but there's a couple of things. I'll just talked about the roof drain outlet protection and uh. You know, there's a couple of little details on the rates and that includes the gutter calculation and roof drain calculation. The other one is, again, so they're reducing the impervious area, not insignificant over what's up there. It's that hole. You know, right side is basically dead. Um but roofs run off. You don't have to pre-treat it, but technically you are supposed to do some sort of treatment. They're not really doing any treatment. They just have it out of the pipe. As a re- redevelopment, that would be okay. Just, you know, have to do more than what's there to an extent. I don't know how they would treat it very easily, but um. You know, that's something you have to. Either accept or ask for something. And then, yeah, the next one is under this stormwater handbook. It says not to put a rain garden in a selfish growing area. And I really don't know why it says that, but that's what it says. Um. Personally, I think that's better than having a pavement running right into the brook. That's something that you should, you're gonna have to either agree with that or. I, I mean, I don't personally see that as having a major impact given how much of the water flows through the brook. You have one thing. But uh and it's a redevelopment, so you, you know, you fit in what best you can because it's pretty new, nothing near. Uh might be different case. And then. The last couple of comments essentially relate back to what my recommended conditions are for erosion control, you know, this, this possible party and then. Uh immediately replace the media rain garden or it to be flooded in there. That's my uh summary. If you have any questions.
What, what flood zone is that in? How, how often is that flooding for?
Well, if you get a coastal storm, a big one, it'll flood, but that's, and that's what it says. The FEMA line, I don't think it's on six feet, but I think it's. Elevation sixteen. Is the FEMA on this one?
No, I, I have it on the other sheets.
Go ahead. So the FEMA line, this, this line here, this green line. So basically, you have a big uh. Yeah, if you, if you have like a, a major coastal storm, that's where FEMA says it's gonna flood. And and I would imagine if you got a big enough one, yeah, it would, but I mean. How frequent are they? I mean, I know I've seen a few and I've got, I, it's a documentation of plenty of ones from my family. Uh I have a little print thing, a copper thing when they make the. Uh you know, the newspapers back in the early days showing it wiping out all the cottages on Cedar Point in nineteen oh nine. So it's not like we don't know it's gonna flood someday.
Right. I just was wondering.
I mean, it's a hundred year storm. You'll see it eventually.
It's a pleasure. Okay, that's, that's my pleasure.
Yeah, it's a hundred year storm.
We are modifying that. It's based on elevation. So it's elevation sixteen and you'll see this green line running through the plants. And we are modifying it. We're tying into retaining all here. So we're um, you know, this will be elevation seventeen up here. So we're providing an improvement uh for that respect.
Student. Well, which side? So I, I think the board needs to make some decisions here. I think you have to, I have to make a decision. On the level spreader and I think you need to make a decision on recharge. Now, you'll also know that we got a comment from North and South River Watershed Association, which that, that was for the two of you. And that comment is basically saying that I understand that this is. First of all, the board has to decide this is a new project or a redevelopment under conservation standards. It very well is a redevelopment. But you have to decide, um you know, should, should the level spreader be increased? And should um serve more recharge? I believe that North and South River is advocating for both.
Can I speak to the recharge? So like Mr. Chestier mentions, where um. You're in a limit of zone A. So this, this red line running across the plan, everything in this. westerly direction is that limited zone A, and with that, you're, you're not allowed to have infiltration EMPs in that area. So that's usually how we would provide recharge, was, with some infiltration. So that really handicaps us to using this area specifically for any sort of recharge. Now, as Mr. Chestier mentioned, when we did those soil testings, that area was not deemed well for infiltration due to the underlying marsh soil we found there. So we're, we're dealing with that and as, as a redevelopment project under standard seven, we're allowed to meet meet that recharge standard to extend practically, and we believe we're doing that with this submission by the reduction of impervious surface. So I believe we went from, I think it was fifty-seven percent impervious surface down to, I want to say twenty-seven percent. So we, we really have the, the pavement on, on the site here, so that's, that was our explanation for the recharge and, and why we designed the site in that manner.
Do the roof leaders recharge?
No, not at the table.
What, what's the, are these just surface rock?
Yes.
So then that level spreader would take care of that though?
It wouldn't necessarily recharge much, you might get a minimal amount in like, I dropped an hour, you got my hands spread over. But what it would mainly do is spread the flow up over the bank so it doesn't concentrate after it leaves the, the stone. It's spread it out better so that you wouldn't hopefully get an erosion spot on the bank.
Something would control that erosion, which is what?
That, actually, my opinion, I think that was certainly helped the road, you prefer that you are away and the more you spread it out, the more chance you have for some of it to soak in, but I wouldn't credit it with any sort of recharge.
And Northern South River is asking for the roof runoff, for maybe some of that to be recharged. But as, you know, Mr. Schumacher said, it, this technically is a re, a tiny area development project and technically they have met standards, but it, but it is up to the board.
So I guess our first quarter business is going to see this as a, a rebuilt or a redevelopment?
I say it's a rebuild.
Ben?
I mean, there are, I think it's more of a redevelopment, because there's a large existing park line, a large structure, and I think the parking lots getting reduced, the structure is somewhat comparable in size, it's a major redevelopment, but it, uh, I don't know the technical definitions of these terms either, so those could be presented, but maybe. Yeah, I guess that's sort of defined, rebuild versus.
So can anybody explain that to us?
I would go, um, Ben, I would say it's a redevelopment, because there was something already there, again, it's just everything is different, but.
They're not redeveloping buildings, buildings coming down.
Right, it's a new, it's coming down. And all new.
Yeah.
It's new.
Certainly it approaches the line that you built.
Yes, yes.
Are those technical terms are defined in the Wetlands Protection Act, where, where are these from?
Those are term, those are terms defined in the Wetlands Protection Act, that we don't, we don't specifically have to deal with them, but, you know, in effort, you're
That's why we're not, we're not.
You're not supposed to recharge in the zone A, you're not supposed to have EMPs in the zone A.
Sure.
So, you know, can there be some type of compromise here? I think there can be. I think that an increased level spreader to, would help recharge some of the water and it would help protect against erosion on the bank. And I, I think that I would wanna see the redesigned level spreader now. And I've talked to conservation and conservation would like to see a redefined level spreader now prior to any type of approval.
So, um, just so I understand what we're talking about, what is this, what would this level spreader look like?
Typically, they look like a, so when the pipe comes out, parallel to, instead of staying, what you would do is next, is parallel to the contour, essentially
Yeah, I've seen it before.
you dig like a little swale, and then they lip a bit, you might set
Trick, yeah.
curving or, or concrete or something, so that when it fills up, it just flows over almost like a sheet. I mean, they're fairly long, it's not like a five foot thick, it might be more like a, you know, fifteen, eighteen.
Yeah, that's why, that's why it's really getting at is, I understand the concept of it, but what would it look like here? Are we trying to really protect the entire bank?
No, 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 with the other pipe that you would take that, you'd see where the contours of the, of the, the bank at, and you come back and you dig something,
Where is that?
you know, maybe like from here to.
Where is that at?
Sherry, and you'd have a, you know, there's two, well, there's three really.
So you need to do it across the whole site?
Well, no, those three spots.
Yeah, but I mean, it's not like this, it's, it's.
Yeah, so they'd be like, for me to share, you say something along those lines, you know, three places like that, so instead of dumping it straight towards the bank, you come out and spread.
And, and then where does, where do the rain leaders come out?
Those, those are the rain leader mid building, those top.
Oh, those three are the rain.
The two up here are the rain leaders and the rain garden at the right, takes the stormwater from the, from the parking lot.
Well, I definitely think we wanna do that, we wanna do whatever we can to protect.
Right.
Right, and so.
And I think one of our challenges is that we have wetlands is a conservation issue, and we have ranging permits under both conservation and climate, so conservation is requesting that we see this as a redevelopment under the wetlands definition.
That's how they're looking.
That's how they're reading it out, so I, I would, I personally, uh, would take that under my side, it would be this as a redevelopment, because like I said, we have to merge all of this information, which is a very difficult piece of property here, so um, I, I guess that we have to agree among us if it's a redevelopment or redesign, and the board said it's a redesign. Rebecca says a redevelopment, Ben, redevelopment, I would say why it's a redevelopment, so Mr. Fisher is, last statement.
Yeah, again, to me, it just depends on what the definition is, maybe if, if the conservation conditions look, is determinate to be really all protected on that.
Yeah. Yes. So.
I, I, I have to admit, I have not looked at the definitions of the two, so.
So the big, but the bigger issue is, do you want increased level spreaders and do you want to try to have more recharge?
Yes, yes.
So how do, so it's, how do you get more recharge other than the level?
That is all.
Can you explain that to me?
Well, the, I mean, the only way would be, you know, to recharge some of the roof water and have some of that in, recharge in the level spreader area.
Which is doable.
I, they'll have to come up with a solution, that's, they'll have to come up with a solution.
I believe the level spreaders are definitely doable, but like I said, we, we can't infiltrate in this limited zone A, so it's, we really have to look at how to do that with the roof leaders, so I'm not sure that's possible.
So will the level spreaders help this roof charge? Like, this does come out the roof, right? Won't the water get caught into those things too, or no?
Is it wanting to creep down, is what you're saying, right?
I am not an engineer, I don't have that ring.
Yeah, you would get some recharge in a level spreader, it's not something you would tread it as recharge quite so, would you size it that way, but because of the way it works, water essentially goes into a sum, fills up and flows over the edge. It's not, the only way for it to get out of the sum is to either fill up enough to flow over or soak down through it. There's not a huge volume of soap through there, but there's a little bit.
I'd like to add too, you're getting recharge with the rain garden, while we're not allowed to claim infiltration, when you actually think about what the rain garden is doing, um, some, some rainwater will seep through that, the mulch in the topsoil provided on the rain garden can leach into the soils beneath it. Uh, we're just not allowed to claim infiltration under the stormwater standards for that rain garden.
And Mr. Chestier, what do you tell us if you can't have, okay, we're not supposed to have rain gardens in the shellfish growing area, but we can make a decision as to whether we can.
So, in relative, so under DEP regulations, and this means, and this is in the buffer zone and all that, so we're subject to those regulations. And yard regulations also link into the DEP stormwater regulations. So, under DEP stormwater regulations, there's no question this is a redevelopment, they have a very specific definition. If you decrease the impervious area, then you change the site into redevelopment, if you, if it's still within the, the area of impervious that you started. Zoning is a whole other issue, so I, and I don't know off the top of my head what the definition is, that's why I raised the question. So under a redevelopment, what it says is you do the maximum amount feasible. So there are very limited options on this site, given that it's in zone A, zone two, flood plain, yeah, I mean, this is probably, I mean, no one was not digging a test, it was built solid, that's part of it, so there's limited things you can do. So they came up with this plan, uh, it's not, I didn't try to think of other plans that they could come up with, this is what they came up with, they started with a recharge system that must have been feasible for multiple reasons. Do I think that that rain garden would be feasible solution and a maximum feasible compliance type solution? I think it would fit within that definition for sure, um, it provides treatment, it, um, doesn't really need much for rate control, you don't have that, it's really for treatment of runoff of parking lots. It's very limited things that you could put there, and that's, I, I don't know why it's not allowed in the shellfish growing area personally, I mean, the idea of the, the containment for shellfish, I mean, one of the big ones is obviously bacteria, because they don't want to eat it and get sick, and I would not think that something like that's gonna breed bacteria, but maybe it does, maybe that's why, I don't know, but, uh, I have to think that the, whatever that would give you is, is gonna be infinitesimal amount, would give all the water running out through that stream. So I, you know, how you could, you know, measure the impact of that and how much bacteria it takes to, to get you, but I mean, there's plenty of sources other than this, I would think, uh, you know, unless everybody locks their dog and throws the bag in the rain garden, I don't think we should get any more bacteria than you would on any other, and even less on, on a regular parking lot, it just.
So we've decided, okay, so we've decided this is redevelopment area, we've decided that, we've decided that we're looking for the, the level spreader we get for our, we need to see that, so we, we've decided that that's an okay solution for us. Okay, I, I have a really lot of questions to ask, how did this building ever get built in the first place? Did we not have zoning at the time?
It was before the Wetlands Protection Act, okay, and that was, this was built in the sixties before the Wetlands Protection, so
Okay.
it, that's how it got built, things weren't.
Okay.
That's your guess.
Things were, things were different then, then.
Okay, all right, I just.
So, the board's okay, but the concept of the rain garden, the board's okay.
Yes. Hold on, Ben?
In, in the, in terms of like the shellfish, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. The board's okay, they wanna see an increased level, level spreader areas, and you're okay with recharge. All right, I would like to suggest that we move on to traffic.
We don't.
So in the, um.
There's one more question here, just before we leave this topic. The North and South River Association suggested also to increase the vegetation buffer. Is that, is that feasible to do in concert with level spreaders here?
I mean, I think the increased vegetation buffer, the buffer is not, you, you would, you don't plan to level spread it just like stone.
Right.
So they, and beneath them, you generally want at least a test of like for a certain distance, like grass to spread it out, as soon as you stop, there are some trees, the ground goes like this, and then you concentrate again, you wanna have it flow out at a very infinitesimal depth is what you're looking for, especially on the smallest, so you want it to just barely, you barely be able to see the water out. So I think the buffer they might, I mean, I don't, I didn't see that letter, I mean, the buffer they might be looking for is in other areas, I, I don't know specifically what they're looking for. Uh, I guess there's, if they want, you know, they would like as much vegetation of trees and shrubs and everything from the bank back as you can possibly.
I see that Samantha Woods is like, we can't hear her now, not right now?
I, I think that we should hear on traffic, our traffic itself has been waiting up a long time.
Okay, so hold on, oh, okay, Mr. Eric, why don't you, you should stop and welcome, we've got you still. Um, Jeff, you can unmute yourself, there you go.
Uh, thank you and good evening, Madam Chair members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeffrey Durk, I'm the managing partner with Vanessa Associates and we're the transportation consultants of the board in reviewing this project. Um, so the board should have two review letters from me in your packet, one is from November of last year, when we reviewed the initial filing that came in with the application, we provided some comments um, on the site plan and on the, the transportation analysis that was submitted for the project. Uh, the applicant did submit a response to our comments relative to the transportation study. Um, and then we did review the site plans as revised through August first. There are also some architectural drawings, specifically our review focused on the garage level, uh, plans that were uh, dated, I believe, July thirty-first, and so you have a letter in your packet that was issued on Monday, uh, that was dated August twenty-second. Um, that's a follow-up to our November review. And just by way of, I guess we'll start with the traffic study and then work our way into the, the site plans that, that you have before you. So from a transportation perspective, uh, the project at, I believe it's nineteen units now is proposed, it's not a significant generator of traffic. At nineteen units, it's gonna produce a less than ten vehicle trips during the peak hours, so one additional vehicle every six minutes. Uh, so a capacity analysis was not submitted, so typically what you'd see on bigger projects uh, would be a level of service analysis with motors delays and vehicle queuing being reported. Uh, the project really from the standpoint of its trip generation doesn't rise to the level where, um, that type of an analysis would be, uh, provided. So the analysis, uh, really from a transportation perspective focused on, uh, sightlines and safety as it relates to the access into the project site. So in looking at those parameters, um, the sightlines are, they, they meet or exceed what's required for the actual speed of traffic along new driftway. Uh, we did note, and I think the applicant acknowledges that the proximity of the site is, the board's familiar to the, uh, the Citroen Rotary. Uh, we do, we know that there's vehicle queuing that happens on the approach to, uh, the Rotary on new driftway, particularly when the trains, uh, come and go, or primarily, primarily when they arrive, uh, in the evening and, and we've got that spike in traffic that happens as people get off the train and head to Route three A. Those queues will back up past the driveway, uh, but again, this is not a significant, uh, generator of traffic, so if you were looking at left turn maneuvers, trying to get into the property during those time periods when, uh, the train lets out and we have the queuing happening, um, you know, the one additional vehicle every six minutes is not gonna create backups, um, in terms of stopping the flow of traffic heading towards uh, the harbor area on new driftway, um, for those left turning vehicles, so all in all, looking at the transportation analysis, it's a low impact project. So as we then move to internal circulation within the project site, uh, we provided some comments on the initial site plan. Uh, the site plan was since revised substantially, specifically with regard to the parking layout and internal circulation, so now uh, what's been proposed is a, is a parking lot that's, uh, parallel to new driftway, uh, having two-way circulation within it, um, and then the, the parking garage below the building. Uh, so we had comments initially that dealt with the, what they had before, which was a bifurcated parking lot with one-way circulation, uh, surface parking lot. Uh, but again, that's been revised, so those comments that pertain to one-way circulation, uh, no longer, uh, no longer pertain to the current site plan. So the site, the site plan that you have before you that we provided our comments on, you know, most of the comments have been addressed, however, there's some real, we'll call them, um, threshold level questions, uh, that need to be addressed. Um, those threshold level questions, uh, do deal with the adequacy of the project to accommodate, um, circulation. So if I, if I could start in the parking garage, uh, the parking garage as is currently laid out has a number of, um, you know, I I hate to call them deficiencies, but there are deficiencies in the dimensionality in the parking garage, those deficiencies relate to two things. Um, the space within the drive aisle, the drive aisle between the parking spaces that are within the garage is not sufficient, it's not wide enough to accommodate parking maneuvers. Uh, you need to have a minimum of twenty-three feet behind an eighteen foot or nineteen foot long parking space for vehicles to get in and out of that parking space. Um, the dimensions that are in the parking garage right now do not meet that requirement, so what it means is that if you, if you just picture, if I've got a nineteen or eighteen or nineteen foot vehicle parked in a parking space and I only have, you know, nineteen or, or no more than twenty feet behind that vehicle, and then there's another vehicle parked in the space behind it, is I back that vehicle out. and then there's another vehicle parked in the space behind it, as I back that vehicle out of the space, I fill the entire drive aisle and I can't cut my wheel. So, it requires me to do kind of a multiple-point turning maneuver in order to get in or out of any of those spaces when there's a vehicle parked next to me or behind me. So, it creates operational issues and really a functional issue as to how the garage can accommodate the parking maneuvers. The other issue with respect to the parking garage is that if you look at the end of parking spaces, if you park in those parking spaces and you try to back out of that space, there's no way to cut your wheel. You can basically just go back, and then you've gotta do that multiple turn, turn point, multiple-point turning maneuver with a garage wall right on the other side of you. So, it, those spaces end up not being functional. So, typically, what you see in a dead-end parking aisle is you basically have a bump out in the garage so that the vehicle can come out of the space, cut into that bump out area, and then maneuver to exit towards the garage area. So, that, that's not provided within the parking garage. And then lastly, in looking at the garage, if you look at the garage door entrance, and it appears to be 13 feet wide. Now, I could have scaled it wrong because there isn't a dimension on the garage plan, but that garage door needs to be 20, it needs to be 20 feet wide to have two-way flow. At a bare minimum, given that there's not a large number of parking spaces in the garage, 16 feet is probably something that could be workable. But again, you need to meet the dimensional requirements in the garage. And then the same issue with respect to the parking spaces that are right adjacent to the garage door. So, there's two, there's two spaces, one on either side of the drive aisle, that are right, right up against the garage door. So, when you have a 13-foot-wide garage door, there's no way for a vehicle to pull into the garage and then pull into that parking space. You'd have to pull head into the garage and then try to back into that parking space, which creates safety issues as it relates to the ability of someone coming into the garage to see that to see that vehicle is trying to maneuver. So, I apologize, is, are you able to hear me still?
Yes.
So, that, so that, those are our comments in the parking garage. So, we've suggested that needs to be revisited in terms of the layout that's in the garage there. As we move to the surface parking lot, it meets the dimensional requirements. And so, we didn't really have any concerns with that. Our concerns really dealt with two questions that we had asked, and then the vehicle turning analysis, which is associated with this question. So, the questions were, you know, how, how do you deal with loading and delivery activities? Where are they going to take place? Same thing with pickup of trash and refuse. I mean, I think it's readily apparent on the site plan, but we'd asked for a narrative in terms of how that will be managed. We also asked that a vehicle turning analysis be provided for a Citroen Fire Department design vehicle, and then a trash and refuse truck and a moving van. And those turning analyses should be informed by the narrative that described how they would manage loading and deliveries and the pickup of trash and refuse. So, the narrative was meant to guide the turning analysis so that as the board looked at that, they kind of matched up to each other. So, the narratives weren't provided, but a turning analysis was provided just for the single-unit truck. So, a single-unit truck would be your U-Haul moving van, as well as a, it would be a small-sized trash recycling vehicle. A fire department truck, a fire department design vehicle turning analysis was not, was not provided. You know, our opinion is that's the, that's the baseline analysis that needs to be provided. You have to demonstrate that a fire truck and an ambulance can get into the site and maneuver, and then leave the site for life, life safety reasons. Then the rest of the site can kind of be designed around those parameters. But at a bare minimum, that needs to be shown. So, we still, that's outstanding, we need to see that. Now, now that being said, when we looked at the analysis for the single-unit truck, we pointed out that that truck is not able to get into the site or maneuver to the areas where it needs to be without completing multiple backing maneuvers. And when it does need, when it does make those backing maneuvers, it drives over the, a portion of the vehicle drives over the curb or overhangs over the curb, both the front and the back of the vehicle. We would, what we would say to you is we typically would not allow that. The reason why is because the, the overhang that's, that's, that they've shown is about two feet over the curb. If that, if that was to be acceptable to the board, you would need to place a condition that all snow has to be cleared entirely, not only within the parking lot, but that it also needs to be cleared within two feet of the curb, because that's the only way those vehicles are going to be able to maneuver within the site. So, what we've said to the applicant is that needs to be revisited. The site needs to be redesigned to the point where those vehicles, which are required for life safety access, but also just to service the building. They're needed for a trash truck to get in there, they're needed for a moving van to get in there for the residents. You need to design, the site plan needs to be designed to accommodate those. So, that, that's a summary of what our comments are. There are other comments relative to signs and pavement markings and some notes on the plan, but those are, you know, easily addressed as a, as a part of the site plan set. But I think it's really access, circulation, life, life safety access. Those are all kind of the threshold items that need to be addressed before we are able to say to you, number one, there's sufficient parking, because the number of parking spaces is directly related to their functionality. If they're not functional, they can't be counted towards meeting the zoning bylaw. So, we need to make sure that, that, that works. But once all those thresholds levels are addressed, or threshold comments addressed, then we'd be able to continue our review of the project. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have now or later on in the presentation.
Hold up, Karen.
All right, so I'm just going to, like I said, we got something in the office yesterday. Does the applicant feel that that addresses all Mr. Dirk's comments? Mr. Dirk has not been provided what you, what you submitted yesterday, or did he?
He had a plan, the plan calls for a 20-foot door.
Okay, well, that's, but that's not what he's looking at, so that's what we're asking.
So, so, does the new material that you've submitted address all the comments he has just brought up?
I can speak to the traffic issues, and we believe they do. We, we got this letter on, I believe, Monday, so I was rushing to make these changes and write a response. So, what we did was, we removed, you'll see this on your revised plan, and I'm speaking for the outside of the building. We removed this landscape island, and we just replaced it with additional hatching in this area. So, this 18-by-18-foot loading space is now 22 feet by 18. So, what that did, and you'll see it on, I believe, a sheet T1 in your packet, it made that turning maneuver for the box truck a little easier because now it was not constrained by this landscape island and had some more width maneuver. So, in doing that, we were able to create more of a three-point turn and turning around with that respect. We also showed a template where that box truck drove into the parking area, backed up into the loading space, and left. So, that again shows that that loading space can be accessed and used in a, in a way it's supposed to.
What about fire departments?
So, regarding that, we initially, I believe it was back in May, we received an email from Deputy Chief Mark Donovan, and he said he had no concerns with fire department access to the site. So, we had no further action on that. We thought that was buttoned up because we got a letter direct, or email directly from the deputy chief.
All right, I think that was several iterations.
So, again, I will run that by the deputy chief again. So, I will forward to new information to Mr. Dirk. Is there a write-off that tells how trash is being handled? And how, and how the, excuse me, moving trucks, et cetera? Is the only allowance for a moving truck a single-unit vehicle?
Box truck, and that's, we can call it SU30, has a 30-foot-wide wheelbase. So, I showed that navigating the property sufficiently. As far as a narrative for a garbage truck, I included quick narratives for both of these. The garbage truck will basically access the dumpster enclosure in this area. I showed a turning template of the garbage truck driving up to the ramp to go down to the parking garage, and then backing up to the dumpster and leaving the property in a three-point turn. So, I believe I demonstrated that, you know, the box truck and the garbage truck adequately access their respective parts of the parking lot and to leave it available.
So, like I said, so, since we don't have this, we'll address this at the next meeting.
Right, but I, I just need to, I'm trying to understand, trying to ask questions for the board. How are you going to tell people moving into these units that they're limited to a certain size moving truck?
We would not say that to, to people moving in. We designed the parking within the constraints of your zoning bylaw as far as the aisle, the spaces, the loading area. So, that, that was how we designed this parking lot. I had the zoning bylaw open, and I designed it to the constraints I saw up in the Citroen's bylaw.
All right, so there's a couple other issues I'd like to get to before we get to public comment. One of them is that we indicate.
Before you read that, I.
That it has to do with traffic.
Oh, you're still on traffic, okay, I thought you were moving stuff.
Well, I, I'm moving to traffic mitigation.
I, I, I wanted to hear, had you addressed the whole problem in the parking garage? Because it sounded like a fairly significant problem that would result in loss of parking.
Yeah, so, a filthy, filthy mark that we redesigned the parking garage to accommodate the 24-foot drive-in aisle and the turnouts at the end of the drive-in aisle, so vehicles can move up.
And then did it result in?
In the 20-foot wide door.
And that didn't result in a change in the parking spaces?
That's correct, it maintained 16, and it did not affect the, the corporate perimeter.
And you addressed the end parking spaces as well?
That is correct, the turnout area of your bylaw.
All right, so I want to talk about traffic mitigation, since every project gets traffic mitigation. There's been some disagreement about what should be for traffic mitigation. The police chief wants one thing, the DPD doesn't want it. I'm suggesting to the board a $10,000 contribution that will be put towards a specific fund for traffic and pedestrian studies improvements in the great, great, great New Driftway area. That, and when I mentioned this at the department head meeting, everybody seemed to be in favor of that. I, I think that's the most reasonable solution to come up for traffic mitigation because, as we all know, this project is not generating a lot of traffic. But if you are gonna feel some increased traffic, because there's been nothing in the building for years, I think $10,000 is a reasonable number for the traffic mitigation.
And, and it goes where?
If it goes into a fund, then.
Whose fund is that?
Actually, the planning board would control it. Planning board.
We controlled that.
We would control that to be spent with approval of planning board, town planner, town administrator.
Not the board's selection.
Not the board's thought.
Thank you, that was my one concern.
We didn't put, we didn't condition the board's selection on anything else.
Thank you.
So, that's, we have, you made an agreement last time on the affordable units. I got some document in that I'll have to forward to town council for review. And, you know, it's just an agreement with this, with Mr. Pollak and the CIL. I, I was a little concerned, I read the, I read the document, and it didn't tie anything about certificate of that occupancy of the, of the affordable units, which are gonna be outside to the project. But I'm gonna pass it on to town council as written, okay? Density bonus. We briefly talked about a density bonus last time. Mr. Pollak, what are your feelings for density bonus right now?
What am I feeling right now?
I mean, what are you prepared to offer for a density bonus?
And just spend $10,000 for traffic?
That's not for density.
I, I realize that under the regulations we're required to, to offer density bonus, and I defer to the board if there's something reasonable that we can agree to.
We take it out of discussion later, you have to decide now.
You don't have to decide now, it's just that every time, it keeps getting pushed further and further out. And so, that's, that, that's gonna be an issue. Waivers. I got something that I did not circulate to the board, waivers, but you know some of the waivers are actually being asked. Are you going to allow parking in the front yard?
It's the handicap space.
It's the handicap space. Are you gonna allow increased impervious area in the front yard? The front yard is supposed to have no more than 25% impervious area. Are you going to allow more, more or, or what on that?
What's, what's, what's?
I don't know, I was not given any details, so.
We mean, it's around 35%, and it is a reduction over what's there now. The, we did go over the 25% threshold in order to provide a handicap accessible rent.
So, you're gonna have to make a decision on that.
I mean, that, that sounds reasonable.
That doesn't sound unreasonable. That does not sound unreasonable.
Okay, so, if there's only one other thing, one other waiver, I, I think if I'm reading this correctly, you're asking for a waiver for the height of the building in the, in the 20, in the, the height of the building in terms of, it's 39.95 feet, and it's, I, I haven't actually looked at this.
Yeah, so, that, I believe that height waiver you're, you're mentioning is part of the building's setbacks, step-back and street enclosure table. And that says, generally, this building is 34.98 feet, and at a distance of 25 feet from the right of way, that building height can be 35 feet. So, I, I don't believe that, so there's a waiver needed for that.
Well, what was the 39, what was that?
Uh, yeah, I think that was a typo.
That was the, I'm sorry.
I believe that was a typo, it should be 34.98, yeah.
Well, again, a filthy, filthy mark, I guess. The building is compliant as far as I expect for these front gates because they're coming forward. So, the midpoint is at the 39.5 feet. This was discussed at the design review meeting, and they thought that it was insignificant as, as an architectural feature, that they liked these, these gabled ends. But for the, for the most part, the eaves fall within the requirements that they're supposed to do. It's just the mean of the slope as it comes to these gates.
Is that all dimensioned on the architectural plan?
It is.
Okay. All right.
So, I'm, I'm sorry. I heard two different things. You just said 39 feet, you just said it was a typo, so what is it? What, what are the numbers you're looking at?
I don't know of this, Steve, I haven't looked at it because I haven't seen, I haven't seen the new stuff, I haven't checked.
The maximum height allowed is 40 feet.
I know what, I know what the maximum height allows, but what are you saying? Where are you saying we're exceeding that maximum height?
That's only these gable ends.
And how long are we exceeding that maximum height?
Because.
My God, but how much? What's the number?
What's, what's the?
As defined by the law.
So, if it's, so if it's 35 feet at, at, at the face of the building, then we're exceeding it by a little shy, shy, just a little under five, four feet.
So, that's a measurement of the, the face of the building.
From the peak to the ground?
Sorry, the, the, the building is measured from the mean of the slope.
Yeah.
So, from the midpoint of the slope to the ground, at this point, the building is being measured at 39 feet, six feet, so. But we're exceeding the 35 feet by that dimension.
Four feet, four half feet.
And that's because it's forward?
That's because it's, it's a gable rather than a slope roof or a hip.
And it's the same problem on the, on the sides?
No, it's the front facing.
That's correct. So, as you go back in the building, then, then we. As we, as you go further back in the building, then we mean.
It's the front-facing side that's set, stuck, except that.
How do you deal with the building condition?
One more question? Maybe I missed it. When did we decide to go into the two-way travel? And park law?
At the recommendation of the traffic engineer.
So, type of public comment? Anybody in the room have any comments? The, now is there anybody online?
Hello?
Yes?
Yep, hi.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi.
It's a little bit hard to hear you, so.
Can I hear your name and give your affiliation, please?
Sure. My name is Samantha Woods. I'm the executive for the North and South Rivers Watershed Association. I just want to follow up with our letter um that we had sent to the planning board and to the conservation commission. I heard a little bit of the discussion about the recharge of the roof and understand some of the considerations that are being made. Um, I think one of the options that we had suggested would, in order to avoid having the roof runoff go so close to the river and then into the river was to think about, if you can't recharge it, you know, if there was a change in the geometry of the proposed building, you could uh increase the setbacks from the brook, giving, you know, more space to the brook so that you don't have to necessarily have that water going so close. I mean, one of the habits, the proposal is the, the proximity of this large structure to, to the first hearing brook. And so, you know, anything that could be done, I think you, there is some ways that the geometry could be changed. You could still have the same area, but you could move it away from, from that, from the, sort of closer to where the existing larger structure is now. So that was just one way. In addition, you know, we did say, suggest a level spreader would be one way to at least avoid some of the erosion that might come from that. I'm not sure. Some of the things that we wrote may or may not be appropriate for your meeting today, so I don't want to muddy the water.
And I, I, I think that a lot of that is conservation issues and not for us. I do believe so.
Except that I do think you guys do have a landscape plan review process, correct?
Yes.
So that's where there's a little bit of, I think, more overlap between you and conservation. And we saw that there was um, you know, there's, some of these aspects of the, of the project are, are clearly improvements over what's there. So I just wanna, you know, commend the improvements. I don't want it to be all negative because definitely there's some good stuff gonna, that would become as a result over what we see today. I would also encourage the rain garden. I think the rain garden, John, actually can remove bacteria from the, the runoff, so I, I think actually that's not a bad thing and I'm, I'd, I'd like to stay with that if, if possible. And I think the wildflower meadow is lovely. If there's any way that that could be extended to that area that again is just behind the, 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 in between, anything in between the brook and the building and/or the footprint of the parking area that we can keep as natural or native as possible. You know, I see that they said uh, like a tall fescue, which is certainly a, a more drought tolerant type of grass, but it's still a grass that will be mowed and will be encourage dog walking and thus dog pooping next to the, the stream. So, you know, we're just trying to protect that buffer area as much as possible from, from what could, you know, end up in the, in the river and clean that water as much as we can and, and cool it down. That was also something to consider if there's any way to make the, the asphalt, not asphalt, but rather an alternative, either permeable pavers or some kind of concrete or something. We know how hot it's getting. That water gets hot, it gets into the brook. It's not good for habitat. So those are, those are some of the things that, that we addressed. Irrigation wells, I'm not sure are in your purview. I'm not sure whose purview. I guess it's the board of health. But I would just say since the proponent is here, you know, if there's any way, I don't know if you have an irrigation well that's gonna be proposed here, but the well, the river is quite depleted because of water demand already and we would ask that not be part of it.
We can condition a well, so, and we don't usually, it's applied what we do, so. We're not encouraging any new wells. Alright.
So anyway, so those, those are my main comments, although I did hear, I think I heard John say that, that during the court, maybe some sediment cores, you guys found some peat, what, what did you, you found marsh?
Yeah.
Type soils, is that correct?
Yeah.
Buried soils. Is that? I guess the only concern I have is this, do we know if this is subject to chapter ninety-one as a filled tideland? I mean, you're not far from the, we certainly get tied there.
Yeah, we, we're prepared to answer that right now.
I mean, that's something the board could request that the applicant, I didn't do research to determine if it was still tideland. It is within the Thailand district of the town. Or the Salt March district or whatever, I mean. Salt March and Thailand district is in that town, so.
We want to take that into consideration with all other considerations, right?
Well, perhaps the app can, can advise us if it's still tideland. You don't have to determine it now for, for.
Just at some point.
At some, before the next meeting.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that. From what we saw, there was pockets. I believe it was really ten feet deep that we started to see the, the peat um and any sort of marsh soils, which, which would have, uh, it would have made sense if you were to fill the parking lot in, in that area for development, you would, you know, dig down deep enough to establish the subgrade. Um, and then there was a, a couple pockets in the middle of the parking lot. To me, that just looked like they reused the soil they were digging up and they, you know, were cutting corners and, and put some down in the middle there, uh, as well as the septic system. We saw some evidence of an old septic system out there as well. So hopefully that provides some information to everyone.
Sorry, it was a little bit hard to hear you, but I think what you're saying is that you saw pockets of, of marsh type peat that might have been recycled. I'm not.
It was very, very irregular and it was generally about ten feet deep that we started to see any sort of evidence of soils that, um, that would have consisted in a marsh.
Well, not, I'm honestly not quite sure what the process is for determining whether it's a filled tideland or not. I think using cores and identifying if there's a layer of peat might, you'd have to check in with DEP on what they, what they would consider for an adequate investigation to answer that question.
Okay, guys, thank you. Any further discussion? Steve, you got it?
Alright, so then this is gonna require continuance. Bearing in mind that everything has to be submitted the Thursday before at noon. Not that we, we don't discuss anything submitted after the Thursday before noon. When do you think that you will be ready? We were thinking either October thirteenth or October twenty-seventh. Bearing in mind the deadlines, if anything that Mr. Chesey has for you, it has to be submitted four weeks before October thirteenth. So, so he gets three weeks. So he gets three weeks and then we get, we get the pair of you back.
And please keep in mind that in case this meeting, we, we try to move or past practice that the staff will not be ready. So, you know, everybody's really busy. That includes a town planner and a periodical engineer. So we need to know that that's a real date, because September thirteenth is a real date that you can meet. Uh, at least, and you're not, we're not for the twenty-seventh. We really need to be, like I said, this is a long time coming and going down to have a light platform. So it's up to you guys. Are you absolutely sure you can get ready for Mr. Chesley, for the thirteenth?
On my end, as far as I understand, I need to add a level spreader. That will not take too long so I can get plans in on, on my end by, by that time.
And yeah, I can check to see all that drawing that Mr. Dirk talked about is already included.
The garage has been updated, basically.
And what about the uh, peat and that type of thing?
Tideland, island. I think that's a conservation problem.
Yeah, I can tell. Definitely.
Well, I, I think you guys wanna know. I think you wanna know whether this is filled timelines and, I mean, but I guess that that's a conservation issue as well. Ultimately, that's gonna be a CDA issue.
Right. So if you could get any information, we'd really appreciate, yeah, sure. Like I said, there's three moments that you have to satisfy, which is unfortunate.
But keep in mind that you only have two and a half weeks to pull this off. Two weeks, two weeks, because Labor Day is next weekend. The first of September is a week from today. So if you're coming to this number thirteen, you don't have a lot of time. You really don't.
We're really trying to help you out here.
We understand the deadline and we can get you the plans by the deadline.
Please be advised that if you don't have that, I will seriously consider you a denied.
Alright, I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing, the site plan administrator review and special permit for multi-family building in the village sector and neighborhood district, Ringlish Gateway District, Ringlish Gateway. This is sub-district VCN GD, G, GWB until October, I thought September. October thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM and to continue the time for action provided with the town clerk until November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's sorry, but we're a little late here. We have a continued public hearing, strong water permit.
Wait, we've been here for seven more hours.
Seven forty-eight. Discussion for sure reduction.
I don't know.
Alright, who do you have to talk to?
Alright, um, discussion about surey reduction, forty-eight fifty-two, neutral plate gas backwards.
Okay.
And we have.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Yo, Mel, how are you?
Alright, getting there.
What are you doing?
I'm gonna try to open, well, as soon as we get power. You can wait if you're not sure. By the way, Aaron covered our site and frustrated National Grid customary.
How we all?
Uh, but it looks good for, they, they said we're tentatively planning to get the transformer in there on Tuesday. I think, once that's in, we probably have three weeks. See, maybe a month. I'm telling everyone a month for about the last six months.
Okay. So you're here for a surey reduction?
Yes.
Yeah. Right, so um, a request for surey was submitted. John and I went out to the site. We outlined uh what we think um the difference is in the surey and we, I recommend that the board surey of seventy-seven, five hundred dollars, either in new bond or a cash, cash surey with the old bond to remain in effect until the new bond is issued.
Any questions?
Good with it?
And?
Seems fair.
Do you have a motion for that? Do we have a motion? I might like have to come back and find.
I agree.
I'm also set how, how loud's request on behalf of Metro River League Corporation for the site plan administrative review, special permit, strong water permit issued by the planning board dated two sixteen, twenty twenty-one, forty-eight fifty-two neutral plate or surey reduction from the existing bond number EACX four one four one zero 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 two four two in the amount of five hundred forty-one thousand, nine hundred forty thou, forty thousand to seventy-seven thousand, five hundred based on the board's consulting engineers review of the surey estimate provided and the current site conditions including a fifteen percent contingency. The existing bond shall remain in effect until a new bond or cash surey is provided.
Your second?
Second.
Question? All in favor?
Alright. Sounds a lot easier than the last. Feel good? Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. You're right.
We'll send out here for um, twenty Man Hill Road?
Yep, I am, um. This is a, a made in continuous.
This is a made in continuous that uh, material cannot, I have received it entirely matter and um.
I'm going to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the strong water permit for twenty Man Hill Road until September twenty-two, twenty twenty-two at seven PM and to continue the time for action provided with the town clerk until October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Now we're ahead of schedule.
Next one's a public care, it's a public here. We cannot, we cannot start this until.
Until eight thirty.
Until eight thirty, so we move it right along. So, um, I do the planning development, of course, thank you, a lot of you. So I believe I sent you all another copy of the tough driveway by, bylaw for your individual comment. So please, if you could get that back to me, that would be much appreciated. I believe I sent you all draft findings effective conditions for fourteen to sixteen Old Country Way. I think I said comments are due on Monday. I think I might have circulated, I don't remember if I circulated something else for comment.
I'm just getting a chance.
Don't remember. On the um, we did get a, from the last meeting, we did get a approximate schedule for first estates. You know, they intend to be doing stuff and um, you have doing sidewalks in October and um, and paving hopefully in October. I did get additional pair of view money for that.
Excuse me, Karen. I went out and took a look and one of the catch basins that people were concerned about did have some um, pavement around where the bolts had been and some of the weeds have been around the catch bases in that, but.
Yeah, and I went out the other, I went out Monday during the rain and the catch basins are not collecting all they're supposed to because they're, they're raised about, you know, quarter of an inch above the binder. They're not flush with the binder, which is why they're not collecting the amount of rain that they should, but ultimately they will be raised when the top course goes on so that they will collect the water. I did not get out of the car, um, but I mean, I was told that the silk sacks were all cleaned in them as well. I don't know that a small child could actually fall in them. I don't believe a small child could. You know, we have, we have curb inlets and I don't believe a small child could fall into curb inlet, so. Things are working out in that department. I have set up a meeting at September eighth at nine o'clock. I just did confirmation of that today, um, to go out to uh, Mr. Banks's residence to look at, um, get what he did for the paving and um, the email seems to suggest he tied it to detention basin, so where he's offered, I suggested it would be a good idea to go out there, so uh, we're gonna. uh, we're gonna do that. I have not, I have not respond, I I haven't responded to, uh, any comments on the other house that did, um, the patio, but the other patio is, is, is very impervious. And so I am told by our consulting engineer that, uh, Metro Gator joint sand is not permeable. But concrete sand is permeable. So, um, you know, we'll, we'll work with Mr. Banks and try to figure out a solution, et cetera. Um, oh, I think I sent you, the third thing I sent you was the stormwater permit for five cold water. So if you have any comments, please get back to me on that.
The other thing you sent us was your report from DRT.
Yes.
And that was O M G. Too much. That was an O M G.
This is what we have going on.
I know. It's one person.
I mean, this is what, this is what is going on and this is what we, you know, we try to keep track of all the ongoing projects, the future projects, the public projects, and, you know, this is what, we have monthly meetings, um, on this and, um, so you see what, you see the stuff.
Is this concerning that some of that stuff goes back years?
Yes.
And years goes back that we haven't wrapped stuff up, just sort of little weird things.
Yes, we haven't wrapped stuff up, but we don't have a lot of time to list.
I know, and that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's the issues we don't really help.
Um, but, you know, um, we are going to be attempting to wrap some of this stuff up.
And we do, it's much, you know, we have, you know, seven and a half hours in the day, but.
I, I've been instructed to try to, um, I have to try to town council, um, try to wrap up sort of thing. That's an answer right now. Wow. And, um, we never got our two affordable units.
Yeah, one of them will.
So I will be discussing that as the next month, hopefully in the town.
Maybe we should just get one of them. It blew off.
It was never put into the decision. That, that's the problem, I mean, we're gonna have to town council, we're probably going to, and thus you, you did, you have learned from, from that.
Yeah.
That's why on Fifty Country Ways and four, we, you just have to be, um, ready for occupancy at, at certain points, so you have learned that. In these multifamily buildings that we're doing, the whole building gets occupancy permit. So thus, you can't get an occupancy permit for the building unless the four unit is ready because you can't, you just can't get the occupancy permit for the building. Because they only get one building permit for the building, so that thus they only get one occupancy permit for the building.
Karen, what are your thoughts on that piece of property for the way?
Haven't thought about it in a while. I, I mean, I would think that somebody would find there's some value in building the mixed use building. However, I don't think the residents down there watch it. And I think by de facto now, uh, the developers, long since watched, um, I think by de facto you might have to get X number of residents to sign on.
Sign on or sign off?
Uh, sign, sign on that they want a mixed use building.
Is there, is there an option that they provide their property and to open space?
It's, uh, it, it's on that, the co- the condo association owns that property.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's not a separate property, it's all one big piece.
Okay.
Um, one thing I don't know if I sent you, I thought I did, but maybe not, is the N B T A legislation became final. I think I sent everybody, um, that, um, again, we don't have to be in compliance till the end of December 31st, 2024. But if we have to tweak zoning districts, we'll probably have to do that sometime in twenty twenty three or early twenty four. We, we do have to come up with an action plan and, um, I don't know what that action plan is going to be yet. There's multiple seminars that are going to be held for this legislation and, um, you know, I had one talk with somebody and they seemed to think we were in pretty good shape. That it may just be tweaking numbers in our, um, in some of this, we have twelve units by right and twenty four by special permit. Um, it may be making around fifty. I do not see how we're ever gonna get the number of units that we're supposed to have. But, you know, I'm gonna go to these, um, seminars, you know, sign up for them and try to learn and see what's going on. Um, and I believe at the next meeting where I'd like to have a discussion on some zoning, um, maybe next meeting or the meeting after, um, you know, because you said, you said you wanted to, um, work out common driveways for these, um, spring town meeting. I think there's a couple other iss- issues that are coming up that are probably in the lines more of housekeeping that we may want to, um, talk about. Um, and, you know, we still have to, based on the schedule, we would have to have a public hearing. Public hearing's in December. Our public zoning workshop in November, because our wording is supposed to be final by January 10th, 2023.
Okay.
Okay, so, you know, even if you have no comment on what I said, just if you can get me back no comment, then, then at least I know that I can, you know, uh, put it on an agenda and we can all talk about it as a group, um, for that. I guess that's pretty much all I have for the moment.
Well, we'll just take a three minute break and let our, right, get started.
Did we, um, did anybody lose count this morning at around six fifteen?
Sure we did.
No. We did? Yeah, I did too. And then there was this big boom. Did you hear it?
I did.
It wasn't, it doesn't seem like it was off for very long.
Oh my, how, two minutes.
Yeah, yeah, but the lights went out, then there was a boom.
Oh, I didn't hear that.
Somebody can tell them.
But they talked anyway.
And they're going to be, uh, finishing up the campaign in North Sittit, so you see, hey, for now.
Yeah.
That's in the offing, starting next week, I think. Okay.
All right, well, time to move in.
I have eight, eight twenty, eight and a half.
So we're gonna move on to, uh, on eight thirty, continue public hearing, public meeting, stormwater permit, site plan administrator review, one oh nine Elm Street lots one and two. Good evening.
Evening.
How are you?
Good. Good to go? For the record, Gregory Morris, registered engineering, Morris Engineering, representing the property owner, Mark Richardson, who's with us in the audience tonight. As was just stated, this is both a stormwater permit application as well as a common driveway application for lot one and two on Elm Street. I put a plan up on the board here, Elm Street is on the right hand side of the page. I depicted it light brown and two proposed homes at this location. And I've shaded the grade of common driveway. Uh, I'll start with the common driveway process here. You had retained a peer review consultant, Horsey, who wouldn't conduct peer review. Um, the common driveway bylaws, section seven twenty point seven, uh, has approximately ten items A through L that must be compliant with for a common driveway. I can run through them real quick. Uh, the first one, A, is that you have to minimize vegetation disturbance on the site. Where we proposed the common driveway is all currently cleared, it's existing lawn area, no trees come down for construction of the common driveway. Uh, B is pavement width has to be a minimum width of sixteen feet. We've proposed a sixteen foot minimum pavement width for the duration of the common driveway. C, common driveway is not allowed off cul-de-sac or tenement street, that's not applicable in this case. D, the driveway has to be located within an easement. You'll see on the plans that we have included an easement around the entire driveway area, including the urgency term. E, you have to have a twelve inch gravel base and a paved top course, that is the cross section that we proposed, so we comply with that. F, limits the common driveway maximum to a thousand feet in length. Our common driveway is approximately a hundred and fifty feet in length. G, you have to show that runoff pre-development versus post-development is not increased. We'll discuss the stormwater further, but we've provided the stormwater report documenting compliance with that. H.
Can I, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes.
Did you receive this information? When it was posted?
We received, we received, uh, one set of information. We received a second set of information on Monday, which is, which is not that, which is our peer review engineer still is in the process of reviewing it. So she'll speak after Mr. Morris speaks, but we received, we received information way before, you know, but not, we're not really talking about the good information today.
Oh, that's a couple of shoes, well, by.
Great.
Oh, gee, yeah, okay, sorry.
Great, sure. So, uh, continuing on, H, you're not allowed to have a driveway under the septic system, or a septic system under the driveway, uh, which we don't on either of the two lots. Um, I, you have to minimize visual impacts to abutting properties. The abutting property at the top of the screen, the top, top of the plan, um, is over a hundred feet away from the common driveway. The property that's on the bottom side is Mr. Richardson's property. Um, we've proposed screening the lawn, the property line between the Richardson property and the proposed lot two, you'll see the screening on the plan. J, you have to provide an emergency turnaround, in this case here, we have a twenty foot by thirty foot turnaround. You should have correspondence from fire department, uh, in regards to that turnaround. You'll note that it is a separate turnaround adjacent to the, uh, driveway for lot one. Site distance needs to be in accordance with ASGOS standards. Elm Street at this location has a twenty five mile per hour designation, a hundred and fifty five feet of distance is required, which is compliant with, uh, in both directions. In that item L of the bylaw, that walk width, um, in this case has to be a hundred and twenty five width. Y may be measured parallel to the common driveway. We exceed the hundred and twenty five foot walk width, obviously in both lots, a hundred and forty five feet on lot one and a hundred and thirty six feet on lot two. The peer review consultant, I believe, encouraged that we had complied with the requirements of seven twenty twenty seven, uh, for the common driveway. Regarding the stormwater permit application, um, this site, as you see it here, disturbs approximately thirty thousand five hundred square feet of land. The portion where we're proposing to work again is largely existing lawn area. Uh, but with the redevelopment, it does propose a total of nine thousand four hundred and seven square feet impervious surface. That's the two new single family homes and the driveway surfaces that you see. What we've done is for each house, we've proposed a roof drywall system, so we would take the gutters and direct those to the subsurface leaching chambers. And then for the driveway, we've directed that to a grass swale, which discharges to a sediment four A and then ultimately into a rain garden. And we've included an entire planting, uh, list for the rain garden area. The sites in the Water Resource Protection District, as such, it complies with a three foot groundwater separation and ninety percent T S S removal. We provided calculations on that. Uh, it complies with pre versus post rates of development. Uh, again, included a construction phase and a post-construction phase operation and maintenance plan for the system. Uh, the peer review did have some comments. As Karen stated earlier, we did respond to those with our first review, uh, earlier in August and then a second review, we responded earlier this week, August twenty second. Uh, but at this point, it was all minor revisions earlier this week. Nothing of a plan itself changed, it was within the calculations. Turn it over to you.
Hi Janet, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Good, well, thank you.
Good to see everyone. Um, for the record, my name is Janet Bernardo. I'm a professional civil engineer with the Horsey Witten Group. And we conducted, um, a peer review of this project, as Mr. Morris mentioned. Um, we have submitted a letter to you dated August third and a second review letter dated August seventeen. We did receive responses from the applicant on August twenty second and we are in the process of reviewing that. The remaining items are relatively minor. Um, just two things I want to make sure that the applicant is aware of. Um, we, we talked a little bit about the grading along the east property boundary. There's gonna be a stone wall and there's a small swell and, and we're just wanting to make sure that when that swell and that wall are installed, that they're installed in such a way that runoff cannot go on to the abutting property. It's, it's kind of a, a tight area and depending on how the contractor puts that wall in and, you know, one grade goes a different direction and, and it would just go on, on to the butter. So that's what we kind of mentioned a few times, we're gonna be like, make sure these grades are accurately shown so that they are, you know, the goal is that they'll, and the design is in a way that the runoff will be directed, should be directed to that rain garden and the, and the roof runoff is going to the chambers. So the concept is, is reasonable. It's just making sure that the contractor actually builds it the way it's been designed to be built. And so those, those contours are a little tight right there. Um, and as we also mentioned, um, this, this property, these two projects, um, are not disturbing an acre, but if they are connected to another project, that's the same common ownership and it's more than one acre, they do need to, um, complete a stormwater pollution prevention plan and file the NFTs permit. So we were just trying to make sure, you know, they're close. If there's another property right next door, if they do anything on the, on the adjacent property that is basically same common ownership, that triggers the NFTs. Um, but we will be providing, uh, the board with a third review letter. And, but we went through the items and didn't see anything substantial, um, that we need to bring up.
Um, I think the applicant should really evaluate whether they need a NFTs permit because this is part of a larger plan of development. If you recall, there was six four A lots on here and this is part of a larger development that both owners signed on. And so I honestly question if they should not have a NFTs permit.
It absolutely requires a NFTs permit and we'll file for one, that's filed with the EPA.
It's a risk. Um, I don't have any other comments, I think, um, whatever board wants to call it.
Um, yeah, I don't.
On it.
On driveway. Is there a reason that the turnaround for the fire department has to be almost part of the driveway into the first house? Could you not scoot it down a little bit?
I didn't want to scoot it down a little bit because we have the swell there for the drainage system right next to it. Um, there is vegetation in between the driveway for the house and the emergency turnaround. We thought it was most important that it be separate based on the last correspondence, so that's why we did it that way.
As opposed to extending, uh, the turnaround for the second house and eliminating this? In other words, make the turnaround up at the top?
What I understood, turnaround like the turnaround up at the top, that's for the house. That's supposed to only be used by the house, not for the emergency vehicle, so you wanted a separate emergency vehicle turnaround. You correct?
Yeah. Given the limitations of the, the site and the drainage, uh, probably particularly if there is vegetation between the two, you know, start using it as just a little apartment.
I think that common driveway is up to interpretation for every single project. Right, so looking at every single project a little differently based on the details of the site plan. You also would like to add?
No, I mean, I assume that the board is going to watch, you know, that area signed and stuff like that. So it can't be used as a spill over parking. I mean, that it has to be, you know, everybody has to understand when they buy into a common driveway that this is turnaround for emergency access. And that's to help, help the fire departments, but it's to help the people who are living there. I mean, that's, that's what it's for.
So people are going, they cannot park in that turnaround. That's not part of your drive, you know, right?
In this case here, it's completely separate that piece from the driveway. And if you follow a similar approval, just the ones you've done before, you'll require a sign understanding.
Just that we, that we follow that same pattern. So if you don't want to get private business, private business, lots of conversation about private business. So I hope people need to know that it can be difficult to make changes. So, do you have any other questions?
I vote to accept the applicant's request to adjourn the public hearing for stormwater permit and site plan review of common driveway, one eleven and one fifteen L Street, AKA one oh nine L Street, lots one and two until September eighth, twenty twenty-two at seven forty-five P M. And to continue the time for action, providing with the time until October fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second? On paper?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, dear. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I'll give the suggestion to the fifteen year old. Yeah, I guess Mr. Tedeschi is the best. So what do you think?
I mean, here we could start.
Greg, are you able to get in touch with him?
I will call him right now.
Thank you. Okay, you can hear us off for ten minutes. Thank you, everything. Do we keep all of this that we've got today on, um, who's this? Seven New Driftway? This is the newest. Okay, so I guess we could cut that, that's why we're going to have a lot of slather, right? Most of us are going to be there. On paper?
Are you ready for, are you ready, Dr.? Okay, so, um, for, for a consulting peer review with, with big projects, the chair and I talk. And we've been doing this for many years. And we decide who we think is the best fit for each project. On the project of sixty-one New Driftway, which we haven't seen the plan yet because we have a distributor to them. But we, we, we have plans for, and you saw them informally. We, we decided that we thought the best fit was John Chesier to present, to do the peer review. And then he would hire a traffic consultant. Mr. Tedeschi feels that he has a potential conflict of interest. So I discussed this with town council. Town council recommended that I, that the board allow Mr. Tedeschi to come in and talk to you. And then the board can make a decision. So she advised that both parties, Mr. Tedeschi and Mr. Chesier, be allowed to speak.
And you would take the counsel medically, would you like to do this? Mr. Tedeschi, you are a person who is likely to have a personal conflict of interest. So I don't think you're probably too much ahead of this, would you like to speak with me?
No, I was going to say, I'd like to maybe clarify a thing.
Would you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm getting there, thank you. My name is Richard James and I'm a lawyer from Goad. And I, I think it's, it's an issue of, I guess, part of the practical innovation, the issue of recusing oneself because of, um, issues in the past where they haven't gotten along that well. John really relate the circumstances. So it's, it's, it is a conflict in the sense that John feels that you just have a working relationship or that John Chesier can be objective toward John's project. So that's the essence of it. I let John relate, John Tedeschi relate the stories and then if I can help with some legal thoughts, I will.
Tedeschi?
Back in nineteen ninety-seven, I had built a home on fifty-two Home Street. I don't want to bring people's names into this. I don't think that's fair. At the time, it was John's father's residence. I had built this home and John apparently had come down the town hall and looked at the asphalt. And the asphalt, asphalt showed a swell on the back of the property that was built. And he said that it was not built properly. And we had been arguing over it. And at the end of the argument, I said, there's one very simple way to show that the water is flowing where it should. And I took two garden hoses, put them out, ran them overnight, showed John that none of the water had gone on to his dad's property. That was the initial conflict. After that, I had done a subdivision probably a year or so after. And I had done that in the town of Normal. John was the review engineer for that project. And I feel that I was abused because of the conflict. And there was another conflict in the parking lot one after, one evening after that meeting. I asked John if he could do only one thing and one thing only, will he talk to me that he would look me in the eye? And he never would look me in the eye. And that's, that's where the conflict came from. It was rather heated. And, you know, when, when, when you're a kid in school and a bully punches you in the nose, you don't forget that. And I don't think John's forgotten it. There certainly was a conflict and I'd like to hear his side of the story.
Could you just say in nineteen ninety-seven?
Nineteen ninety-seven, yes. Yeah.
It still goes to the issue of obje-, of objectivity, is his point. But I think it's John Tedeschi's point that because of the background, there's a question of objectivity.
Well, you're talking a long time ago and a little bit my recollection is that clear for all of this? I do know that there was a house built behind my property actually in ninety-seven. I believe it was my property because my father passed away in ninety-one. My mother passed away in ninety-six. So couldn't have been theirs. So, I mean, I think I do an objective job of reviews. I don't have, I mean, I deal with engineers. I don't deal with owners typically. I can look you in the eye right now. I'm looking at you right now. I don't have anything to hide. I don't have anything. You know, I, you know, I mean, I do these reviews all the time. I can tell you that a lot of people don't like that I do the reviews because, as you see, I do a very thorough one. When I do a review for something like what you did up proposing, I mean, I already have done reviews for things in the districts. So there's my template. I just go through it. I look at the plans. I review the stuff. There's nothing personal about any of it. I do it, you know, I follow what the regulations say. I follow what the stormwater regulations say. I prepare my letter. I think I'm a professional. I think the board knows me. I think they accept that I'm a professional. I try to be professional in, in all manners. I mean, I have, and people that I know ask me to do design work in situations. I'm like, I'm like, no, I can't do that. I mean, people that are close friends, it's like, I, I don't want to do that. That's, that's, I see that as, if I had a relationship with you where you hired me for something, I couldn't do this review, no question about it. But I don't feel that there's any issue here. I don't have any issue. People have been there for the neighbors. I'm close with the neighbors. They watch, they're odd in my yard and I don't care. You know, there's no issues now. I don't have any issues with you. There really don't.
So I guess my question is, Mr. Tedeschi, do you feel that we would not get a fair review from Mr. Chesier?
I, I don't feel very good. I don't, don't think it would. I, I hate to, I hate to bring this up either. To start a project on this, no, it is not good. I don't like wasting the board's time. I feel like I'm wasting your time with something like this. I just don't feel it's right. There's many other engineers out there. Pick one out of my hat, it's fine.
Mr. Chesier, we, we follow the state statute and, and we do get to pick a peer review engineer. We picked Mr. Chesier specifically because he understands the complicated V C L zoning. And he has done a wonderful job with everything he's done. And I want you to be very careful, you know, my lawyer's saying yesterday, you don't wander into some kind of slanderous conversation. That's what I'm concerned about. Mr. Chesier, in my opinion, everybody has to chime in, has done a professional job. And I know he did most of his own very personal failures. That's why his job, he is a professional.
And how, how many projects has he done in that zone?
He's done several projects in that, in that zone.
Because it's, it's new, isn't it?
And it is new, but he's, he's done the peer review for the gas station. He's done the peer review for seven New Driftway. Those are the, those are the two projects that are in the zone right now. He also did the project for eighteen Ford Place. And I will remind the board that chapter forty-four, fifty-three G says that it's a conflict of interest or the engineer is incapable. I certainly don't think we would hire Mr. Chesier if he was incapable.
I'm not saying he's incapable.
I'm just reminding the board, but in forty-three G, it's,
That's the statute that we work on.
It's conflict of interest or it, or not qualified. And so if, if he, if the board thinks that this is a conflict of interest, then that's what you, you have to decide. I, I don't, I'm not sure how it's a conflict of interest.
Seven, seven New Driftway, has that even started?
It's been, it's been under, it's been, it's been in the process for over a year. It's, it's not, it's, it's still going through peer review.
They don't think this is about seven New Driftway. So, you know, at the end of the day, I think it's, you know, kind of our judgment calls. It's rising some level of conflict of interest.
That's what she made say.
And bounce that against the, all these professional results we get from Mr. Chesier, so.
I mean, I can tell you what town houses, town houses didn't think that it sounded like a conflict of interest.
I tend to agree.
As to why? As to why, twenty-five years ago is a long time. And people change, things change, and it's time for all of us to move on. And I think Mr. Chesier does a remarkable job.
I'm not saying he doesn't.
So I think I do not see at this point in time that there's conflict here with what we're asking him to do.
What is the issue about giving another, there's multiple engineers that do peer reviews? What is the issue about giving me another one of those engineers who obviously does quality work? It wouldn't be on the list. I'm sorry, please.
Mr. Chesier, it's, it's, it is up to the board to, to pick the peer review engineer. And I know that other developers come to us and ask us why they can't pick their peer review engineer because your, your engineer cannot review your engineer. And that's pretty much how it works. And we're both being working through you.
We're not asking you to succeed in your job.
We're not, we're not. And we have several people that we work with. And right now, Mr. Chesier is the most qualified for this project, given his particular zone. We can assure you, and I can tell you, I can miss my reputation, he is going to give you a fair result. And there's no doubt that he would ever do anything without getting it.
I disagree with that. And the reason why I disagree is I read the quote and just to say, one item, it was traffic study. Okay, traffic study, thirty-five hundred dollar number is there. My whole traffic study was two thousand. How can he charge thirty-five hundred for a traffic study that I paid two thousand for this individual study?
Because we allow for multiple reviews. We allow for multiple, in the proposal, I asked for, and I'm asking this for every proposal that we get, three rounds of review that way because we know all the comments aren't initially addressed. They're never usually addressed on the second one. And it takes, I mean, it takes three plus reviews, even on simple projects, to get all the comments addressed. That's why there's multiple rounds of review in the numbers.
And I, I actually don't think, that is so, that is so consultable.
It's so, it's so.
That, that is not part of this discussion.
Jerry, Mr. Chesier.
That is not part of this discussion, whether the fees are fair or not fair. And it sounds to me like you're claiming that we're being gouged or something. I, I just, I think you're going down a completely different rabbit hole here. This, this was supposedly a conflict of interest. I don't see the conflict of interest. And as the chair said, the board gets to decide who's going to be their engineer. And we will make that decision. We hear what you've said, but it's our decision. And we've had many developers come in and ask us to have one engineer versus another do it. And we don't do it that way. Make decisions based on what we think is best for the board for this review of the particular project.
I ask a question of Mr. Chesier. And so, I guess, Mr. Morris is in attendance, so if you want to turn it out because there are two registered professional engineers here. I'm not fully aware. I know in some professional licensure type titles, there is a professional code of conduct and ethics that goes along. Is that something that a P P has as part of their licensure?
It's most, definitely required.
So, so we have three professional engineers. So, so I'm just, I, I, that's kind of what I know when I slide for the records. Um, I guess my reservation of dismissing this on a conflict of interest is that's causing me to make a judgment about Mr. Chesier's ability to work as a professional engineer. I personally don't feel comfortable making that decision unless I have actual evidence in front of me. And I don't think that's really my role as a member of the decision plan board either. But, I mean, as far as I know, you're a professional engineer. You have appropriate degrees and experience and licensure. I have to assume that you're going to do your job in a professional, ethical manner up to the standards of your industry. You know, maybe this is a case where you feel that's not the case, that there's a conflict. Perhaps to Mr. Tedeschi's point, when he first came in, maybe you should recuse yourself. But I don't feel comfortable saying, no, you, you, you're, because that's making me say that he can't do his job up to the standards that he's passive. And I, that makes me feel uncomfortable.
Well, he has never called him alone, but Chesier would be sitting here. I mean, that's kind of how we base that. If, if, if he could do, if he could do his job, we wouldn't hire him. I mean, so I have to look at, at how we hire people. It was on the past part of tipping and what, what he's done for us. And he is yet to call him alone, that's here for me, like.
He's incredibly thorough.
Yes.
Incredibly thorough. He comes up with stuff that we hadn't even thought of. Yeah, so.
But, and that's what we appreciate about, about him is how very thorough he is. And he does the, he gives us a really, really product that humans and developers should be proud to have and then be able to give to the child with all kinds of treatments instead. It has been vetted to the nth degree.
My engineer does as well.
But your engineer is not our peer review engineer. So that's the basis is one engineer who works for us and one engineer who works for you. And those two people check back and forth and they figure out all the stuff that they need to tell us. We take all of their information, distill it, put it back into a decision. That's, that's how the process is pretty much. That's, that's how the process is pretty much cut and dried, that's how it works on the most basic level. So you can be assured that your engineer will talk to our engineer, and we will get a great project out there.
It is a great project, and I look forward to bringing it up to town.
But I cannot support that there's a conflict of interest here. And I guess I'll have to take the walk off. Yeah?
I see a conflict, again.
Based on the evidence format, I don't know.
I don't see any conflict there, I leave it up to the professional judgment, the engineer, to decide who he thinks is really concrete in the conflict. He does, I hear no evidence of a conflict of interest here. No, I don't see it, either. Dislike, but not conflict. I said a dislike, but not conflict.
Yeah. And I think, yeah. The engineer, we all have to look at people we don't probably go to like, but we get along, because we have to do that sometimes.
Yeah, to get along, to go along.
Now, is that a decision, and?
I didn't appreciate it, I don't, I'm not, I treated you good, and this is my job, religion, I didn't do it. And I would, I wouldn't have a job without it.
I think we'll all work out. I think we'll all work out, and we might just go on, we can't please everybody all of the time. And we can agree with the three, but we're moving on.
All right, Mr. Chessie, if we, if everything moved, then you were about to give a debate. It's not, it's not a problem, I'm not jumping, Mr. Chessie?
Thank you.
Thank you, we will. We will have to hold on, this is the way to care.
No, I think, our report, thank you. We, I finished my report earlier, but then we may be able to.
Is it likely, motion?
Yes, please.
I will, we adjourn.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.